That's all yours. You may be great, so if you have a card for questions, raise your hand. Kerry's gonna come by, okay, one over here. Just one? One, what an inquisitive group we have. Just one, Bob, you're the only one. And I bet I know what it is. It may already be in the questions. Doctor and Commissioner, why don't you guys go ahead and take your seats and I'll get started here in a second. Before we get to the program of the candidates forum, I wanted to remind you that by the end of the week, we need your nominations for our December awards program. In December, in this very room, we're going to honor our members of our city. They don't have to be a member of the Greater Key West Chamber of Commerce, but we're gonna have a preservation awards to take a look at their criteria. The Key West Stars Business Reviewing Award, the Venture Award, and a piece of the Rock. So if you have someone in mind from one of those categories, please make it known to Kerry or myself by the end of the week, and then we'll have the committee go to work on that and we'll be making those awards in December. All right, it's time for our final candidates forum. Are we about betting for an election, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes.
Can we get that election over? You know, I was thinking, Dr. Barnett, that you may wanna provide a complimentary, chiropractic adjustment to all of our mail people who've been having to cart around all of that paper that's in our mailboxes these days. But one week from today, I think we're gonna have it done. So this is the final candidates forum. Here are the round rules and one-minute opening statement for both of the candidates. We'll have two minutes to answer each question since we have just these two here today. We will allow rebuttals and we'll also have a one-minute closing statement. So with that said, let's open it up to opening statements. So we begin with the incumbent Commissioner, Colonel Lopez, followed by the challenger, Dr. Ryan Barnett. Please key your mic when you're speaking.
Good afternoon. I first of all want to just thank the chamber for having this forum and allowing this opportunity to be able to address you once more before the election on November 30. You know, the District 6 Commissioner has to be able to not only represent but relate to the needs of the people in this, the most historic, most diverse district in the city. That person must be a problem solver, a person who can bring people together where there's been division. We've seen no greater division than we have this past year. I've worked my whole time in office to try and solve division. For the most part, I believe that I've accomplished that though. I also believe that District 6 Commissioner, more than any other, must be a person that has no agenda of his or her own, but to represent the people fair.
Hi, everybody. My name's Ryan Barnett. Thank you as well, Chamber, for having me today. I'm a conk, I feel I represent the future leadership of Key West. I have a ten-week-old son, his name's Lucas. He's a very sweet boy and it's a big part of why I care deeply about our future generations to come. I would describe myself as someone that's very responsive in general and also I'm very present. You know, I'm a small business owner from a family of small business owners and when it comes to accountability to getting the job done, you know, that's where my focus and my teachings personally for my family have always come from. I appreciate your attention today and I look forward to this forum. Thank you.
Thank you. As you heard, we have our timer bell, so the candidates are getting a 15-minute warning. When there are two minutes for these questions and they're up, then the work people will ring them out in two minutes. Okay, first question here now, and I'm gonna start with Dr. Barnett and his follow, Mr. Lopez, Commissioner Lopez, you can follow up. And it has to do with the cruise ship referendum. If this passes in a week, what is your greatest fear and your biggest challenge if the referendum passed?
Well, my greatest fear is that as a small business owner, similar to me at the beginning of the COVID crisis, when I locked my doors one day and worried that there was an opportunity very possibly for me not to be able to have a chance to open that door. And certainly, that to me is something, as we go through lots of different changes during this time, I empathize greatly with the citizens and the small business owners. I feel that small businesses are our independent economy for the United States, and there's nothing I believe in more than small business as something that allows for, you know, the independence and the strength of our nation. With that said, I am also very curious that now with the vote here being settled in a few days, I find it interesting that for the first time, really, to my memory, we're seeing a chance for the citizens to speak up for how they would like to see cruise ship management take place. With that said, it does create a little change or shift in the balance of power. Does that put the guarantees that, you know, there still won't be a compromise down the road? Absolutely not, but it certainly starts to shift the narrative and allow the people and locals of Key West to have a greater voice and say, and for that, I am in favor.
Commissioner.
Thank you. I think that my challenger actually has it a little bit backwards because he likes to say and have you believe that I jumped on the bandwagon late, but the reality of it is that I was already meeting with staff, meeting with the small businesses that he claims to care about. Some of you I've met with directly and told you that I'm more concerned with your families and the families that you hire than I am about your business itself. And that's just the truth because that's where the business connection comes in. It has to do with our family. That said, I was in the wheelhouse with the captain while my opponent was on the dock looking for a ride. The reality of it is, is that I've always been on board with it. I was meeting with the people who championed the safer smaller cruise ships, and there has been community output and input, rather, with respect to management. I think that right now, we just need to have a stronger voice at the table, that we have to have a stronger presence at the table. Reality of it is that in 2012, we had a referendum then as well that opposed the dredging in order to accommodate the larger cruise ships. That was just the first step to where we are now. So I think that just we're moving in the right direction and it's something that we just need to be involved in. Thank you.
I have an obvious question while we're on this subject about the cruise ships. It is taking a different look at it, the same question, but a slightly different angle. If the referendum passed and you've got $90 million, $90 to $100 million of economic impact that is going to be lost to the community, that revenue stream, how does it replace? How do you replace it and how do you fix the tax burden that would be created on the city? Commissioner Lopez, let's start with you and then we'll move on.
Sure. There are a number of ways that we can look at that, but the truth is that once again, this just adds to more of the unknowns. In talking with our city finance director and our city manager and the like, you know, we, some of the numbers that we've heard on one side vary from the numbers that we've heard on the other side. So somewhere in the middle usually, especially with this kind of issue, lies the truth. So what I think that we just need to do is to be prepared for the outcome of this referendum and be able to move forward from day one.
If I may, just respectfully say, I think both sides agree on the $90 million number, the $90 million impact.
Agreed.
Yeah. So Dr. Barnett, how do you propose that this city replaces that kind of revenue and the impact on the boat?
I tend to side with Commissioner Lopez in respect to the fact that there is uncertainty after the fact. Certainly, we've seen the referendum and the city come out and mention that for all intensive purposes, there is a break-even point between the cruise ships and the revenue we bring in because of the services that needed to be output. However, with that said, I do find it hard to believe that the city will not find themselves at a deficit to a certain extent due to loss of cruise ship revenue. Where I believe my position on the city commission would be valuable is in the sense of strategic planning. You know, in my whole life, I've learned what it's like to set up goals and then work towards them over the year and the years after so that we can see growth and progress. And as a private sector individual that would be entering in government, I do feel that if we could increase efficiency, I feel that is one of my greatest strengths, is organization and efficiency, that we could expedite potential cost savings and overexpenditures so that we could help continue to close the gap on some of those revenue sources that we may miss out on.
All right, thank you very much. Next question, more from the 30,000-foot level. Dr. Barnett, I'll start with you on this and then Commissioner Lopez. What are the most critical issues facing the city and what are you advocating and solutions?
Absolutely. I mean, first and foremost, to me, I know this is, for a lot of us, maybe not the most immediate issue today, but I think it's the most immediate issue for our lifetime, which is our sinking island. And it's something that I have a great deal of concern about just because as I attempt to raise a family in Key West, I really wanna make sure that we have protections in place to maintain our quality of life. And I certainly talk a lot about, you know, the simple stuff like continuing to have a more organized approach to cleaning our stormwater drains, continue with the tidal valves. Personally, for my business, we're already looking into flood-proofing opportunities because I took on water in my office in Capton Street for the first time this year, and that's a great concern as well, drainage pump stations. And then ultimately, I think where the real benefit comes in is starting to create a revenue stream to work with and play ball with the Army and Corps of Engineers, being vitally important. If we're talking district-specific issues, I would like to see a significant improvement once again, just because when we look to our future generations, we need to preserve our history and culture and we need to continue to make strides in making sure that that part of Key West is preserved. I guess I'll close out with the understanding that, you know, because of my, I guess you could say, time in life relative to age, affordable housing is a major crisis for many of my friends and always has been, and it's something that I think is a very important issue to do everything. And I certainly am all in on pretty moral affordable housing.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Yes, I agree that affordable housing is always number one, but I think the big thing though is, and we're dealing with that right now. I just had a talk with one of the members here today with where we're going with that. I just pulled back, one of probably the biggest effort that the city will be making to add to the affordable housing relief in our city. I just pulled it back because there is still a number of unknowns that I'm unsatisfied with, even though it's the project that I want to lead as my legacy as your Commissioner. So that will be coming back before us, but it has to be a transparent process that will go before the committee that actually oversees that area of the city in CRA. Secondly, I think the COVID response is gonna be first and foremost, because COVID-19 is gonna be with us for a while. How do we deal with that? How do we keep our people safe? How do we keep our people healthy? Listen, folks, if the business owners are not healthy, you've got no stores opening. If their workers are not healthy, you've got no stores opening. If the people who serve, who patronize those stores are not healthy, you've got no stores opening. So we need to make sure that our plans work in that direction as well. Sea level rise, I agree 100%. The island's not sinking, the ocean is rising. That's the reality. So, and the stormwater tidal valves are a big help. We cannot eliminate the fact that we're only three feet at our highest point away from the ocean's top level.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez, I'm gonna start with you on this question. You touched on it a little bit, reworded, and the radio ads, your opponent has criticized you for the length of time that it's taken for this affordable housing to take place in Bahama Village. He's also criticized you about the blind and impaired school. What is your response to that criticism? And then, Dr. Barnett, I'll let you follow up after Commissioner answers that question.
Well, I can start with the affordable housing project. My opponent says that I've done almost nothing in the last 15 years. Well, tell the folks that have kept me in office all that time that when I came in, we settled several lawsuits dealing with everything from gas to tourism. We cleaned up the street corners from open-air drug sales in the Bahama Village area. Some of you remember the Whitehead Chapman Lane and those areas where people were afraid to go down. There was a period of time where people were afraid to go into Bahama Village. Now everybody wants to be there. We wrestled our tax dollars away from a corrupt land trust, some of whose supporters actually support my opponent, and developed a transparent process, which is the group that I talked about that will be overseeing some of the questions that we need answered concerning the affordable housing. We've come up with, we've developed a new city hall, new fire station, the Douglas Gym restoration where kids all over the city go to, a new pal gym, an SOS kitchen. We've got a lot going on right now, and there's been a lot that we've accomplished. I sponsored the very first resolution of any municipality in our county to support FEMA, and that resolution included a clause encouraging the others to do the same. There were just so many other things. And then we created and clarified the scope of the Truman Waterfront Advisory Board, which ended up in a very wonderful part.
I guess my response to that is I'm gonna stick to District 6 specific issues when it comes to where we're trying to head with solving a couple of these very important issues or topics of conversation. When it comes to what is left of the acreage that is government-owned land, it's certainly in my intention to create affordable housing out of that land, but it wasn't that all too long ago, and I'm sure many of you remember, when there was an attempt to rezone that land for assisted living facilities, which met lots of resistance in this organization and ultimately ended up in the difficulties we are now having today moving forward this issue and why it's now once again being pulled off the agenda. So certainly, when it comes to accomplishing the affordable housing with the 3.2 acres we have left, I can tell you that that is where all my intention and focus is, and I feel very confident that that's something that is very achievable and it's something that I've based my campaign on. When it comes to the hair of school, that is also something, certainly as a kid, was a really cool hurricane shelter, but has certainly become, fallen into disrepair, and I live by the hair of school. And I'll tell you that as a neighborhood group, we've talked and been very frustrated by the lack of enforcement when it comes to the city dealing with the hair of school and the attention to detail. And so, you know, certainly the hair of school is something that we can make lots of progress on if we stay on top of it and maintain that approach that I've described, my ability as responsive and present and essential organization to continue to make progress on the hair of school. Thank you.
A rebuttal from the Commissioner.
Yes, I just wanted to add something concerning the hair of school that we are working on there. The hair of school project, the hair of school problems started when three government entities let that fall into private hands. Once those government entities failed to pick it up, that includes the City of Key West, that includes the county, that includes the school board, and that includes the state. When these entities did not take it up and preserve it for the people, then we had to deal with private property rights. That would get us into lawsuits worth millions, constitutional rights of property owners. It would become a complete legal minefield. So we have to proceed carefully. We have to be very careful with our view of that. And by the way, we are right now as we speak, the Assistant City Attorney is working with the property owner's attorney to try and come up with another date. And that's one of my frustrating things, was looking at the number of different dates that they're trying to get everybody on the same page for so they can finally bring this thing to an end. Well, I'm looking forward to that too.
As we close out with the topic of the hair of school, I'll tell you that when it comes to the level of code violations that have been ongoing there, whether it be from the ability of research of the citizens to discover zoning discrepancies, which by no means was, that's in my opinion, a citizen's responsibility, but the attention to detail by government. It's amazing what is able to get accomplished when you make an issue in a campaign as polarized as this, move forward at much more of an accelerated rate. But, you know, as we look at the groundwater from washing machines, we look at the illegal tenants, the expired tags, the selling issues, the illegal dumpage on the property, these things time and again have been going on for as long as I've lived by that property and with very little headway of progress. And yes, to the cities, I'll tip my hat to the city that now we're making progress, and I have every intention of making sure that we accelerate that progress and at least allow enforcement of the proper codes. Thank you.
Okay, next question, first to you, Dr. Barnett, and then Commissioner. The city's Get Back to Work Committee has identified food insecurity as one of the greatest challenges facing Key West. What can be done about it?
First and foremost, I think that we're on the right track with the strategic plan and implementing, you know, an approach to government that helps to forecast the immediate and long-term needs of our community. So we've had the opportunity to buy ourselves five to six months of time to allow kids that go home hungry on the weekends. Over 50% of children, you know, arguably are going home hungry on the weekends. So I think the backpack idea, filling them with food, is a terrific accomplishment by the city, and thanks to the CARES Act, it's instantly achievable. I have two caveats to where I think we will make the most progress when it comes to affordable housing and a program like this, we're feeding our children, is having a dedicated liaison or individual to field questions and organizations. So now we have accomplished that with the city with the food program, and certainly it's something that we've borrowed enough time to continue to search for strategies and resources, but I have very little doubt as compassionate of the community as we are here in Key West that we will allow this to go on any longer with our children, especially as it relates to the fallout from COVID. The other liaison that I think is critically important right now is we do need, if we're going to make low and very low affordable housing, we need someone who's now dedicated to in-the-city fielding and a point of contact for workforce and affordable housing so that we can get the capital grants and funding, because we have city-owned land that we need to create such desired, you know, project, I might add. Thank you.
Some of the best ways to get some of those federal grants and other grants is when two government entities can show that they are working together and resource sharing. And I wanna give a shout-out to Mr. Risa Exford because I know that the school board and Ms. Alyssa Levy has been working with the backpack program and other programs. Just last week, I met with a group of Boy Scouts in our city, and I told some of them, to the shocking of some of them, that, you know, some of your friends go to bed hungry every night. And I know this. This is not something that we need to be buying time for, this is something that we need to be doing right now, right now. When people were making noise about the Bahama Village food pantry, as slipshod as it was, as makeshift as it was, or whatever the case was, it was a community grassroots effort. I supported it. I think it's a great idea. So what did I do? I decided that let's build on that. We've got an empty space nearby, a block away, where we can actually fill it with even more food, and food that won't be out in the rain or be exposed to the elements. That's what I'm trying to do. That's one of the things that I want to do. Now then, there are bigger programs that we're also looking into, and I'll be meeting with some of those other committees that Ms. Levy has put together, and of course, Ms. Exford. But that's what I have on that subject right now, but there's nothing that touches my heart more than that.
Last question, and we'll start with you, Commissioner Lopez. For a while, businesses have carried the brunt of blame, hostility, and negative criticism from locals and even sometimes elected officials over the subject of tourism. What have you specifically done or will you do to support, protect, and advocate for our local businesses in Key West?
One of the things that I want to do this coming term is to get together with some of you, some of the business owners, and let's talk about the reinventing of ourselves. We all, we, all of you are familiar with the reimagining of Key West, and there's some things that will always be here, like tourism. We know it's always gonna be there. How much of it, how much of it can we depend on? Those are the things, again, we gotta go into the unknown. So what I would like to do is let's get together some of our best business minds, some of our best financial minds, and let's talk about the what is. Let's start planning now. I remember back, well, I don't remember, but I remember reading about back in the 1930s. I remember reading about when the government came in and reinvented our city for us. Well, the government, let me tell you guys, I spent 30 years working for the state government. The state government has already told us they ain't coming back. They've already told us that. So right now, we need to be ahead of that. Once again, it's one of those situations where we need to be in the driver's seat for our own destiny. So I'm looking forward, and if any of you are interested in discussing this and having this, this conversation, then please reach out to me because it's something that I plan for my next term as your City Commissioner.
As a business owner, I ask myself this question all the time, in relationship to my business first and foremost. You know, profits are down, revenue is not where it used to be, and to be fair, I don't see that being something that's turning around overnight. And I think that real understanding is setting in for a lot of us. What I do think moving forward is, you know, unfortunately, this is going to be a difficult four or five months. As a healthcare professional, this virus has spread pretty much to the way I thought it would all along. You know, once it enters a community and it's as infectious as it is, it's going to be a part of our community, and until, certainly, there's a vaccine, conquering down is a big part of it. When it comes to the spread of the virus, the two biggest proponents to infection is the level of intensity and the level of duration that you find yourself exposed in any environment. Me personally, I certainly think that we have a rare chance as we go through flu season as a community to try to practice outdoor commerce as much and often as possible. And certainly, when it comes to working with any business in our community, if we can create that approach by, you know, removing any... we move through part of this season as we dialogue and still try to look for answers.
Closing statements, one minute, Dr. Barnett, first with you, and then the Commissioner.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you having me today. You know, I think change in the district, new energy on the city commission could go incredibly long way. I hope that you've seen at least one quality inside of myself, that I'm a teacher and I'm a communicator. Those are the two things that I did practice, I pride myself on the most. I do not have any other interest, and I want to say this because I don't really understand why that comment keeps being made, than to see Key West thrive and to contribute in a positive way to our community. I feel that my passion, my attention to detail, and my commitment and focus to Key West and District Six would go quite successfully when it comes to my experiences up to this point as a young leader. Thank you.
Oh, yes. I just want to say, guys, the fire still burns, you know? You already have energy on this city commission. We need someone who is who he says he is. We need someone who did not just become a candidate and then decide that he wanted to be someone. We need someone that has worked his whole life in and for this city. We need someone who knows the people, someone who you already know. You already know me. I'm from the city, I'm from the people. You already know the people, you already know me. I'm Clayton Lopez. I'm the man for this job. Thank you.
Help me thank our District Six candidates. If you haven't voted, you have one week between now and Tuesday, and I'll remind you, the Chamber Board has recommended a vote with regard to the cruise referendum of no, no, and yes.